Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. We're about to start the meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and do the pleasurable allegiance.
Pleasurable allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, and to this with liberty and justice for all.
Have a roll call, please.
Counselor Noak.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Bartholomew.
Here.
Counselor Kupinski.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Mayor Johnson the second.
Here. The city attorney with us tonight, and then Director Bailey is acting as city manager this evening, correct? Thank you. So item three, the special presentation by Chief Hooton, has been postponed to a future meeting. So we're going to go directly to Business from the Public. She's bringing it up now. We have two people signed up to speak to the council. So I'm going to read the statement. Business from the public for persons wishing to address the council. Speakers will be limited to three minutes unless extended by the mayor. Councils should hold their comments until business from the public, business from the council. All writ materials have been forwarded to these counselors and entered into the public record. Instructions for getting copies to the public records is in the city's website under Business from the Public. The manage taker will hand the minutes at the shut up sheet. So the first speaker will be Brad, Brad Dennis regarding the new fee at, and utility bill. On utility, excuse me. Please introduce yourself and address and tell us why you're here to speak with us.
Yes, I'm Brad Dennis. I live in North Albany at 1212 Northwest Spencer Mountain Drive. And I'm here tonight to discuss what I discovered on my utility bill a couple of weeks ago. And I'm sure you're all aware that there was a flyer inside explaining the new city services fee on my residential utility bill. And it explained that it was to provide additional support for the fire and police departments, the municipal court, parks and libraries. And I thought to myself when I saw that, that I thought that's what property taxes are for, to support general fund operations of the city. And I don't believe that this is truly a service fee because it's not providing a direct service to me, but instead it's really a tax because, you know, a tax is to support general fund operations. So when I paid my bill, I wrote a note on it saying that, you know, nonutility tax increases must be billed through the Benton County Tax Assessor. Obviously, this is my opinion. And I said that you don't have the legal authority to put a nonutility tax increase on my utility bill. Again, my opinion. And I returned the flyer along with my check. I subtracted $6.30 and paid the balance, which was about $135. And I did receive a very polite phone message from the person in the utility department. I think her name was Desiree. And anyhow, she left a message for me explaining the position of the city. And I noticed that that was a week ago. I noticed they haven't cashed my check. So I'm not sure if because it was short $6.30 that they're going to put me in a problem with threatening to cut off my water. I hope not. But I had discovered some documents online. The first one was, and you've, hopefully you've been presented these materials, Brief History of Oregon Property Taxation. And down on page seven, it talks about local option levies. And then I found in the Oregon Blue Book, there was a section on government finance for local government. And again, there was a section that says when the rate limit does not provide enough revenue to meet estimated expenditures, the governor may request a local option levy from the voters. And then I noticed that in fact, the city of Corvallis had done this in 2019. They were trying to raise funds for their parks and recreation and their library, just like the city of Albany apparently is wanting to do. And so they put this on the ballot. And then the city of Portland did something similar. They had a parks local option levy that they put on the ballot. And in fact, the city of Albany, looks like they had a local option tax. You use the word tax instead of levy, but it was to provide additional funding for ambulance, fire, police. And so it's my belief that that's the appropriate way to try and raise these additional funds. And so my recommendation is that the council reverse their prior decision to put this on the utility bill and instead seek to put this on the November ballot as a local option levy. And I think this is the best way to go about it. And it ensures that the city doesn't have any legal fees trying to enforce this. So that's it. Thank you for.
Thank you very much.
To voice my concerns.
Thank you. And the councils will have comment during Business from the Council if you stay for that time. And I'll be asking the city attorney to chime in also. So not now, maybe after. Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker that signed up is David Whitman. Can you please come and tell us who you are and why you're here to speak with us? Thank you for coming today.
I'm David Whitman. I live at 115 Alco Street Northeast here in town. And I'm retired, 77 years old. I live on social security and my small pension. I was just trying to figure out what the logic is that we've always before voted on a bond to fund these departments and stuff. And now you people are just universally taxing us. I just don't understand the logic behind it. I mean, I just went grocery shopping yesterday. I spent more money and got less food than in my entire life than I said to spend yesterday. I just don't understand the logic in it. Price of gas is almost $4 a gallon now. And yet you guys want to charge $9 a month so I can flush my toilet. It's beyond me. Why can't we do it like we used to always do it with actual vote on it? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. And we'll be making comment during Business from the Council. So we'll have to wait until we get done so we can address it, okay?
Okay. I have one other thing.
Yes, sir.
Is there any chance we could change the ballots around here when we vote by mail? So we actually know, have an idea who we're voting for? When they say nonpartisan, well, evidently somebody is going to vote some kind of tax like this in the midst of an economic depression. Evidently, isn't real conservatives. I'd like to know that before I vote.
So everybody that's registered to vote in the state of Oregon is listed on whatever site, their party site. So the position is nonpartisan, but each person, I'm sure, has been, has selected a political party. So the position itself is nonpartisan.
All I get is what's written in the voter's pamphlet and on the ballot. I don't see where you guys have debates or anything where we can actually listen and talk to you at a town hall. But if I'm going to end up elected a bunch of, excuse me, Nancy Pelosi's, then I'd like to know it before I vote. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next on agenda is second reading of an ordinance, AMC 2 dot the 2 dot 66 dot 070, Personal Services Contracts Amendment, Director Jaeger, Finance, pages three and four of your agenda. Director Jaeger, you have comments?
I don't have any additional comment unless somebody has questions, and then I'd be more than happy to answer that.
Counselors, you remember this, we talked about it in the work session regarding the contract.
For the public defender.
For public defenders.
Yeah, public defenders, yes.
Yes.
Counselors, do you have anything? Counselor, nope, counselor, everybody's good.
Here's your.
Move for the second reading of the ordinance.
Movement to second reading. All those in favor say aye.
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 I can't hear you, counselor.
Aye.
Novak.
Aye.
Aye.
City Attorney?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance admitting ordinance number 5612 to clarify the procedures used for personal services contracts related to municipal court services.
Counselor, I can make a motion.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 If motion passes six to nothing, six zero. Thank you very much, Director. And the next on the agenda is the adoption of the consent calendar. Does anyone would like to move anything off the consent calendar? Does any changes anybody like to make?
Yes.
I do have a comment.
Done on a consent calendar?
Only if I'm understanding clearly, this includes the minutes, does it?
Yes.
Yes, then I definitely have a comment before anyone moves to pass it. Hang on, I need to refer to some notes I made this morning. It said on page 12, "Novak is frustrated by the State of Oregon Budget Committee laws." No, actually, I'm concerned that to the degree that we're following the Oregon budget law, because Oregon budget law is supposed to be transparent and easy to understand. And I still don't think we're there. Also on page 14, it has been noted, quote, "Novak wants the budget document to be simpler to read." Again, no, I'd like it to be what it's required to be by Oregon budget law, which is transparent and easy to understand. Also, the Oregon Blue Book from the Secretary of State requires citizen participation in budget preparation. I did not see citizen participation in the preparation of the budget. I know that we were presented a budget as a committee before we voted on it, but there was, to my knowledge and to the knowledge of the individual that I put on to serve on the budget committee, no opportunity to participate in the preparation of the budget. So those are just some comments that I wanted noted for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Johnson.
Yep. I don't know if we've changed the way we do it or not, but I'd like to take off D, no, excuse me, C two. And I guess I can tell, it shows me as being absent and I was on vacation. So I'd like that to be changed to excuse.
So it should be allowed absence or something like that, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. So that might be. Did you get that, Allison?
Yes.
Okay.
That sounds great.
So.
Can go ahead and approve them tonight, and we want that changed before they are signed and archived.
You have to vote that, Counselor?
You bet.
Thank you. Can you also make those changes to the statements that were attributed to me?
We'll go back and review the statements again, recording, and just make sure that we have them stated correctly, or that we changed.
Thank you kindly. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Kupinski had a question.
I was wanting to move that we approve the consent calendar with the changes as suggested by Counselor Novak and Counselor Bartholomew.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Next up is Business from the Council. And I will start on this side of the, I'll start with Counselor Novak. She was last, last time. So I apologize for that. Counselor Novak first.
Okay, no problem. So you'll be, I trust, happy to know that I have found an individual who I will be putting forward to serve on the HRC. His name is Mike Going, and I'm looking forward to having him there. My only question that I have in regard to this is whether I do have to have a completed application for him. He is paralyzed from the neck down. And I know he has an assistant who helps him, but I don't know if I have to have an application on file, or whether I can just put him forward because I'm putting him forward.
That's a great question. Allison, what have you seen in the past?
I haven't seen this in the past, but I would think we'd want a completed application. Because that backs up, excuse me, our choice or your choice.
So you could, so we could have his assistant or him, he can verbalize it and the assistant can fill it out for him.
Right. So I.
Counselor Novak, I think what we'll do is we'll have someone on staff reach out to you to get contact information and try to get the application completed.
Very good. I do have his contact information, and he said via email is good. So I'll provide his email and also his phone number. And that would be great.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Director Bailey and Counselor Novak. Was there anything else, Counselor Novak?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. And since Ray, Counselor Kupinski is here, we go ahead and go, Counselor Kupinski.
I'm okay. I'm clear for tonight.
You're clear for tonight. Thank you. Again, welcome back from New York. It's good to see you. Counselor Johnson?
I just wanted to say that I had signed up for the LLC conference in Bend. I think it's the end of September.
October.
And got an email that, of course, what's going on in the state right now, you know, don't know what's going to happen. And so I just wanted to say that it's kind of iffy right now. I'll make, I'll kind of watch it. You know, I want to go because it's always an interesting thing, you know, conference to go to and you learn a lot. But it's going to be one of these decisions, like should I or shouldn't I? And if they, depends on what, how the health issue goes, if they're going to, you know, continue with it. So hopefully they do. But that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bartholomew?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Olson?
At our last meeting, I asked if we were going to have a.
Dick, could you get on the mic, please? I can't hear you.
There you go.
I still can't hear.
Not sure why.
Yep.
Nope. Something's not right. It's not your fault, Dick. It's not, it's not on, I don't think. You're definitely on it.
He's on, his brother's on.
Some technical difficulty.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I can hear you. I can hear me.
Is it on? This is on.
How about now?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, that guy can't hear me in the front. Okay. Anyway, at our, at our last meeting, I asked if we were going to have a CARA meeting this month. And I was assured that we were. And then we got notification this morning that the meeting is canceled again. And it was canceled last month, and I think the month before that. So we're about a quarter of a year without a CARA meeting. And the reason I'm concerned about is that one of my constituents would like to talk to us about a project that they would like some care, help with. The Cumberland Church, as a matter of fact. And in June, I said, well, go down to City Hall and ask for an application and fill it out, and we'll be able to talk about it. Well, they didn't want to give her an application. And I said, well, come, just come to the CARA meeting and talk to us. And we'll see about whether you ought to have an application or not. Well, there wasn't any CARA meeting last month. And I said, well, I've talked to the administration here, and they said, we're going to have a CARA meeting. So come to our meeting next week. Well, now we're, they say we're not going to have a CARA meeting next week. So that's one of my concerns. The other concerns I've heard about, word of mouth, so I can't say who it is that would like to talk to us about the project. But I know there are a couple of parties who would like to come and talk to us. And so I would like to suggest that we should have a CARA meeting next week. And as a matter of fact, I'll make a motion that we should have a CARA meeting next week.
I'll second that.
And was that Bessie that?
No, that was Counselor Novak. We have a motion and a second for a CARA meeting next week.
Okay.
I'd like an update on all the projects. We haven't heard, had an update in months. I think that's a good reason, too.
Thank you. Just a minute. City Attorney raises hand.
Although it's the same group, I think maybe you would want to go out of a city council meeting, go into an ARA meeting and make that motion that way rather than to the city council. So and it hasn't been advertised, we have an ARA meeting. But I guess my question is, and I don't know, and it sounds weird, was the, is the CARA meeting advertised now? And it hasn't, hasn't been canceled yet to the public? So as the public sees it right now, is there still a CARA meeting on?
So, so Director, Economic Director Ashad Suresh on the Zoom, can we have him comment?
I'd be happy to, Mayor. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So John, to your last question, the meeting was canceled. And Counselor Olson, I'm sorry if we got our wires crossed. There was no intent on undermining a promised meeting by any means. But I would be more than happy to write an another update for everybody on project progress, just like I did last month. Counselor Novak, you probably saw that email. I wrote a semi detailed note about where we're at with projects. And as we noted, you should notice, we're simply finishing up some big development contracts per the projects that are already outlined and have been agreed upon, and we moved forward with and financial partnership has been committed for, namely the Wells Fargo and the St. Francis project. So the intent was not to quote unquote, waste anyone's time until there was something substantial to work with. And that's what we intended on bringing in September. But again, staff's more than happy to give you an update on, on projects similar to what we did last month.
Well, you don't need to worry about my time. I served for almost for free. And my main concern is my constituents who are not able to talk to us as a CARA committee. And therefore, I would like to have a meeting.
And Counselor Olson, just so you're aware, I did chat with those folks today, and they intend on coming to the September meeting and Business from the public.
Are they going to have an application so they can tell us what they're talking about?
Yep, we passed it on today.
How about other people who have proposals they would like to talk to us about? Is there going to be a meeting next month?
In September, there most definitely is. In fact, it's quite a full schedule. So there will be a meeting.
Well, I was assured of that two weeks ago. And look what happened. Canceled at the last minute.
Okay, so, so we're having a meeting in September.
So I'm, I'm still, I guess my motion should be that I would move that the city council ask the CARA committee, the ARA committee, to please have a meeting next Wednesday.
Mayor?
Yes.
Make a statement. So I, I'm not sure. I, I think as far as procedurally how this would go, but it sounded like from Seth that the meeting next week could have Business from the Public, so people could come and discuss potential project ideas. But as far as scheduled agenda items, there really isn't a lot to provide to the ARA board other than, because most of the work right now, it sounds like, is in developing the contract document.
I'm unable to understand you through the mask, I'm afraid. Could you take the mask off for, for a minute so I can understand you?
Sure.
Thank you.
My understanding from Seth is that the, there could be Business from the Public, but there's not going to be a lot of business, other scheduled business, because most of the work that's going on right now is the development of the contract documents, which is, you know, not really, there's nothing really to weigh in on. It's just drudgery that has to happen with the staff. So just FYI, if there is a meeting, there may not be a whole lot of content, is my understanding.
Well, I would think there would still be Business from the Public. And there's public who would like to talk to us.
Sure, yeah. Sure, yeah, right. I, I do think that there would be business from the public, but I think the intent was to try to be efficient with everyone's time and not have a meeting where there's not a whole lot of actual work to report on. So that was, I think, I just want to explain the intent.
Are you worried about my time or your time?
No, we're, I think, worried about the council's time.
Well.
We need to, to, to finish this up. Let me take Counselor Novak first, Counselor Kupczynski, and then Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. I can definitely appreciate concern for our time, absolutely. But I don't know if I'm the only one who missed information. Did I understand you correctly, Seth? You're saying you put information out in the last month with updates on the projects, because I haven't seen it. That's part of why I'm concerned that there hasn't been a meeting. I haven't seen any updates in months.
I'd be happy...
Not in my email.
I'd be happy to forward you that note. I wrote an extensive memo in July in lieu of a meeting just to say we're simply, where we're at with projects and what's going on on the nitty-gritty side of things. So I'll forward that to you. You can review that again.
I'd appreciate it. I don't, I didn't, it never reached my inbox. I, I never saw it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Counselor Kupczynski.
Yes, to address Counselor Olson's comments about the couple of folks that ostensibly have applications in file, ready to go. I believe that Seth addressed that and said that he'd contacted them. They've got the applications. They're already in line and queue to address the, address CARA on, in September. I'm perfectly happy with that process. I don't personally see a need to have another meeting in another week.
Counsel Johnson.
Sorry. Yes, and I was just, Counselor Bartholomew said that she didn't get the, the July email either. I did, but now I can't find it. But I talked to Director Sherry earlier today and said that, you know, if we're not gonna have a meeting, if it's only details that the staff's working out and whatever, that if you could at least give us just a sentence for each project that we're working on right now, the waterfront, the St. Francis, and the Wells Fargo. I said, "That, that way, at least we know kind of what's going on," you know, because sometimes if you get past a couple, three paragraphs, it's like everything just goes together. So, and he said that he would be glad to do... Well, I don't know if he said he'd be glad to do it, but he said he was too...
Glad.
Yes.
Glad.
But that way, I mean, at least you know what, kind of what's going on, even though we don't have a meeting. I, I'd be okay with that, as long as we knew kind of an update that things were going forward and not just this, like, nothing. And so I think that's, that's one good way to go.
So Counsel, excuse me, Director Sherry, can you put something out for us at your earliest convenience?
I'll do it in the morning, if not tonight.
Thank you. So we're gonna have a meeting in September. We were assured of that.
Yeah, it's gonna be an exciting one, too.
Okay. Counselor Novak, your hand is still up.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Anything else, Counselor?
We still have two motions on the floor.
We've got two motions on the floor. So, Counselor, we, the first motion, what was the first motion, Allison?
To have a meeting next week.
First motion was to have a CARA meeting next week, and Sean Kidd expressed concern that that motion should be made in an ARA session, an ARA session, I agree with. So the motion may be invalid and doesn't need to be dealt with.
And I think Counselor Olson made a new motion.
So the first, the first motion is done.
So was your intent, Counselor Olson, to withdraw the first motion?
It was, yeah.
Okay, so.
So then second motion, Allison?
The second motion was, Dick moved that the city council ask the CARA and ARA to please have a meeting next Wednesday, and Counselor Novak seconded the motion.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
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 Counselor Johnson?
Two, I'm sorry, aye. I mean, no.
Motion fails four to two, or two to four. So there'll be no meeting next week?
Okay.
And then, does that it for you, sir?
I'll believe it when I see it.
So the expectation is we'll have a meeting in September regarding CARA and the progress of projects and business from the public. So thank you, gentlemen, Counselor, excuse me, Seth, for participating, and thank you, Sean, and Director Bailey for participating as well. Anything else?
No.
I only had a couple of things. The mask mandate, I had mentioned last, on Monday's meeting, that I'd bring up the mask mandate, at least some, some information from me regarding the governor's statement. But apparently she, today she released a statement with a mask mandate starting on Friday the 13th of all days. And so you see us in masks. And I would ask all citizens of Albany that be respectful of people's wishes if they choose to be, to wear a mask. It's a personal choice for their own particular safety and their family's safety. And let's not attack one another for being safe in our own way. And on the flip side, if a business, personal business or private business chooses to mandate masks within their facility, then you should abide by that or don't do business there. And other than that, we'll follow the mayor's, the governor's guidance, and from that point, we'll figure out what we're gonna do with this Delta variant, 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 and get past this and get our cities back to safe, and our kids safe, and our families safe. And the next thing is that the Art and Air Festival's coming up, and I'm excited about that, and look forward to seeing everyone out there. And then other than that, that's all I have for this evening. Director Bailey, do you want to have a city manager's report?
Just two things. The River Rhythms concert tomorrow night is, is still on, so I hope people can enjoy the concert and be safe with there. And then, as you mentioned, the mask mandate beginning Friday, so masks will be required inside all city buildings for public and staff. And just for the public who may need to come in, we do have disposable masks available. So if you need to do business in City Hall, you can still do that, and that's all.
So did you say we're required to have masks inside this building at all times?
Beginning Friday.
And people at the park don't need to have masks tomorrow?
Right, the mask mandate does not apply to outdoor events.
Okay. Well, again, I can't, can't understand you with a mask.
I'm just trying to practice.
Didn't understand what you had to say.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead, Counselor Kupczynski.
Just one comment. Because I believe we need to be as transparent as possible, I think sitting at the day is with a mask on detracts from that dramatically. So I will be doing Zoom meetings for the council meetings until the foreseeable future, until masks are no longer required in the council chambers. I just believe it's better to have our faces shown.
As counsel, I, I think a lot of us in agreement with you.
Yeah.
This is, this is not comfortable at all right now with this mask on, so. We, Counsel, we probably need to discuss that. Okay.
I would go for Zoom.
Counselor? So Sean, do we address it now, or do we wait?
We'd probably be better to address it now, because it's going into effect Friday, which will then impact our, our next meetings coming up for work sessions and our next city council meetings. So if, I don't, we can have a motion to, from a council member to go back to Zoom meetings until the mask mandate is lifted, and that would be enough. We don't have to do it that way either. The council can, we can do that on our own. But to make it cleaner, if we want to do a motion, then we can go ahead and do that.
So moved.
Second.
Are you moving? So you move it?
The motion, Counselor Novak, your motion is to return to Zoom meetings until the mask mandate is removed.
So moved, so we have a motion in the second?
I seconded.
Yeah, motion by Counselor Novak, and a second by Counselor Smith. All those in favor say aye.
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 Currently on Zoom?
Yes.
Yeah.
So if motion passes six to nothing.
All right, great.
Thank you. Is that all, Director Bailey?
That is, and we'll make sure that we get that information out about the transition back to Zoom.
Okay, thank you all for your time this evening. Have a good evening. Drive safe home.
Mayor?
Yes.
Well, were you gonna address the comments from the...
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So the gentleman that brought comments regarding the city services fee, from what I understand, you can sit up here, sir, if you'd like to talk with us. So I'll have the city attorney address the legalities of the city services fee. The council voted five to one for it, and it has been implemented. So, city attorney?
So thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this has been an ongoing discussion we've, we've had for a couple of years now in, in public meetings of whether or not this was the, the way we were going to approach the, the issue of, of having deficits. But to address the legality of, of it, this has been litigated in, in the courts in Oregon. It's gone up to the Supreme Court of Oregon back in 2007. It was a case out of Jacksonville, Oregon. Very similar to what we have in the city of Albany right now. And the courts, the Supreme Court determined that a city service fee is not, in fact, a tax. It doesn't violate the Oregon Constitution, Measure 50 or Measure 5. It doesn't, and, and one of the distinguishing things about it is that a service fee, the way the city of Albany has imposed it, it's against, it's on people, the person who uses developed property. So it doesn't apply to any and all property like a property tax does. It also doesn't apply to just an owner of property, but if there is, it applies to whoever is signed up for water and sewer, not, not who owns the property. There's no lien mechanism in place, so if you don't pay the water or the city service fee, the city does not have the ability to lien the property and foreclose the property for lack of payment. It would then go towards a collection, either turn over to collections or would be addressed in your water and sewer service. But the city does not have the ability to lien or the property or foreclose that property like a property tax would be, could be done from the county. Those are some of the distinguishing factors that the court looked at when they ruled on the case in 2007. There was also an attorney general opinion back, I believe, 1998, that addressed school impact fees the same way. That was also held to not be a tax. And that's, that's the reason that a lot of cities and counties have imposed these fees the way they are. Again, the, the main distinguishing point is there's no lien, no lienability on, on properties per lack of payment, so that the city or the county could take somebody's property away from them for not paying it. So that, hopefully that helps a little bit. I know it's not probably what you want, you know, the, the answer you want to hear, but that's, that's the, the legal basis for it anyway, so.
Do you have any additional comments, sir? Do you have any additional comment?
I can't hear anything.
Neither.
So if you can address the mics, sir, the rest of the council would like to hear what you have to say. If you can use the mic, the rest of the council would like to hear what you have to say.
It's a tax. You can call it any other thing you want, but it's still a tax. You're telling me that I, I could not pay that $9 and get away with it?
I, I wouldn't say you would, would get away with it. It's, it would impact your, your water and, in your water and city sewer service, that it wouldn't impact your ownership interest in the property. So the city's not gonna be able to foreclose your property for not paying it. Similar to if you didn't pay your water bill. If you didn't pay your water bill, the city can't foreclose your property for not paying your water bill, because you don't have to, you're not required to hook up to water if your property's, if your property's not developed, so.
Well, you guys are gonna be pulling in over $2 million a year, and that's just the city service. And that's just on three-quarter lines. You don't even say in here what they charge these other lines. Director charged anything.
Well, I, I believe in the documents are online. It kind of details out all the fees for every size water line.
I never got into computers. I don't have any idea what online is.
Well, most, so, sir, most payers are paying the three-quarter inch or one-inch line in the city of Albany. I think 93% of businesses are paying the three-quarter inch or one-inch line. So most businesses will have, you know, the $9 fee. When you look at the distribution of how many businesses we have in town, that's a huge number of businesses that's only adding $9 to their...
When you guys raise the water rate, I could give up my vegetable garden, because I couldn't afford the water. I don't water my yard anymore.
Well, I'm, personally, I'm opposed to grass in the first place, so I don't water mine it either, so. Because I was raised on a farm. My grandfather told me, if it's not feeding your family, then you shouldn't be putting water on it. That's my...
So anytime the government falls short someplace, they can just add on to my water bill.
No, this was done for the president of our budget shortfall.
Well, if you guys want to raise, you just say, "Well, you're gonna pay another dollar a month on your water bill."
A raise?
Or you could vote this in, you could vote in a raise, you could vote in a pay. If you got two of them, won't even come down here. They gotta come over the television set to be here.
Well, that's an option because of, because of the pandemic. It's anyone participating. Thank you, sir. So anything else from council? Next meeting will be online at, on August... This is the wrong thing on here. This doesn't have the dates on here. This is incorrect. I think it's the 23rd and the 25th of August. 23rd, it's 4:00 PM, and 25th at 6:00 PM and on Zoom. We'll see you all then. Thank you.